Hello everyone, my name is Peter. And I'll be leading you today on a wonderful journey of breath work and meditation. We will have a wonderful session where we will open up our respiratory system. We will relax and we will journey with it. Let's set our intention for today's session. And think of something that's meaningful to you. For example, for me, it will be to calm our heart and mind and to release the tension. If you have an intention, we can start off with some warm-up exercises. You can sit cross-legged, you can sit in any variation of lotus, you can sit on your knees, or if you prefer, you can sit on a chair, as long as your back is straight and you can keep the rest of your body nice and loose. Okay friends, we'll get right into the warm-up to open up our chest, open up our circulatory system and let things center in our mind as well. Prepare for the breathing exercises. Okay, let's just do some gentle movement, move your shoulders, move your neck a little bit. Just loosen up, loosen up, twist your wrists, inhale up, exhale down. Inhale up, exhale down. Few more times like that. Put your hands up, interlace your fingers, exhale to the right, inhale to the center, exhale to the left, inhale to the center. Few more times like this. Now we'll do some neck rolls, inhale to the back, exhale to the front, inhale to the back, exhale to the front. Gentle, don't force the movement, it's a gentle warm-up, it's just to get things going a little bit. Stop the other way around, inhale to the back, exhale to the front. Okay, center, roll our shoulders back. Inhale up, exhale back, inhale up, exhale back. Just a nice flow. We all need this, a lot of us, sit in front of a desk, this helps greatly. But to balance things off, we'll move to the forward. Inhale up, exhale forward, inhale up, exhale forward. Now for a little exercise, we'll just shrug our shoulders up and down. You can do it as fast as you can, as slow as you can, doesn't matter, just get the movement in. Okay, now let's just loosen up again. Now we'll do some twists, twist to the right, twist to the left, twist to the right, twist to the left. Keep going, two more times. Going to Sufi grind, we'll roll around, so exhale forward, inhale back. Keep your back straight, shoulders loose, body relaxed. Two more rounds, stop and the other way around. Inhale, exhale, inhale, exhale. Smile, relax, we're here to have a good time. Nothing too serious, can't do it wrong. There's no wrong way to do this, there's really no right way to do this, it's just a matter of doing it. Now we'll start off with yogi, three-step yogi breathing. So first put your hands on your belly. Inhale and feel your belly fill up like a balloon with air. And exhale, feel it deflate and move closer to your spine. Just notice how it fills up and how it deflates. Inhale, exhale. Inhale, exhale, nice and slow, just observe your belly, watch it fill up with air. Keep going like this. Three-step yogi breathing has many benefits. It relaxes you, oxygenates the body, helps with insomnia, but it also helps you to learn how to breathe properly and correctly throughout the day. Okay, one more. Now we'll go to the second step. Put your hands like this on your ribs, if that's not available to you, then put them flat on your ribs and inhale and watch your ribs expand. Feel how they're expanding on every inhalation, feel how your lungs fill up with air. Keep going like this, few more times, nice and gentle at your own pace. Smile. Okay, exhale and just give it a second to settle down. We now had our first step, second step, we'll now go to the third step of yogi breathing. Hands up, interlace your fingers, put your hands behind your neck, your elbows up in the air, expand the chest and inhale. Exhale, inhale, exhale. Notice how your lungs fill up with air fully, chests open up. Feel full inhalation. Few more breaths like this, gentle, slow. Inhale, exhale. Now raise your hands up and gently slowly with palms open, move your hands down on the exhalation and put your hands on your knees. Inhale, exhale. Let your breath return to normal. Smile, close your eyes, relax a little bit, enjoy the moment. Feel how this gentle, slow breathing opened up everything for you. Keep your eyes closed. We will now do three rounds of strong yogi breathing. Strong yogi breathing should always be performed with caution. Should always be performed on an empty stomach, at least an hour and a half, two hours after you had a meal. If you had any serious, if you have any serious health issues, problems, you shouldn't be performing this or perform it very, very slow and gentle. If you had surgery, if you have heart problems, if you're pregnant or menstruating, just take it easy, follow along, don't force anything. We will follow each round with Kavala Kumbhaka, breath hold, which is half an exhalation and then the retention. If you don't feel comfortable with that, you can just continue breathing. But we will, we will do three rounds, fifteen, twenty and thirty times respectively. I will do the count, I will lead you along, so don't worry about it. We'll just, you just have to concentrate on the breath. Okay, let's begin then. Exhale fully, inhale and we'll go, maybe I'll demonstrate this first. We'll go at a faster pace, full inhalation, belly, chest, top of the lungs. We will continue like this for fifteen, twenty and thirty times in each round respectively. And let's begin, exhale and let's begin. Keep going. Five more times. Inhale, exhale fully and hold. Stop the breathing, feel the, feel the retention. Keep your eyes closed. Whenever you feel comfortable, just start breathing again, start breathing again. Don't force it, don't hold too long. Inhale, exhale and let your breath return to normal. Let things settle, observe. See what this breath has done for you. Feel the subtle changes. Feel how the energy spreads throughout your body, feel your fingers, toes. The practice is still working a long time after we have finished the round. Let your breath return to normal. Couple slow, deep breaths, not too deep, just breathe normally, let things settle down. We have to let that energy that we got going, we have to let it settle down now. And if you feel good, comfortable, let's do round two. Exhale fully, inhale. Ten more times. Five more. Inhale, exhale halfway and hold. Whenever you're ready, inhale again, don't hold too long, don't force anything. Exhale fully, inhale, exhale and let the breath return to normal. Let things settle again, relax. If you're still feeling okay, if you're still, if you're feeling fine, do round three, we'll go for thirty times now, but you don't have to do the full thirty, if you feel fifteen, twenty, whatever is enough, stop at any time, that's fine. Okay, exhale fully and inhale. Keep going. We inhale and exhale through the nose unless specifically instructed. It is okay to exhale through the mouth if exhaling through the nose is not available to you at this time. However, you should always inhale through the nose. Filters the air, warms up the air and opens up the lungs much better. Okay, five times, five more times. Inhale, exhale halfway, hold, hold as long as you feel comfortable, don't force anything. Whenever you're ready, exhale fully, inhale, exhale gently and let the breath return to normal, feel all the sensations. Feel how this practice affected your body, your mind. We created a lot of energy. We have to let things settle, return to normal, relax. We opened up your respiratory system and we also let a lot of emotions steer up. If you're feeling emotional, that's okay, that's fine, let it happen. Let it be, it's all okay, this is all part of the process. Whatever you're feeling, it's fine. Just return to regular breathing, keep your eyes closed and keep, keep breathing gently. We will continue the session now with very slow and gentle three-step yogi breathing. So what we learned in the beginning of the video, filling up the belly, the chest, all the way to the top of our lungs. We're gonna do the same process very slowly. Inhale slowly. Hold a little bit at the top of the inhalation and exhale slowly. Feel the lungs fill up, the belly, the chest, top of the lungs. Hold for a second or two, exhale slowly. Feel how the air fills up your body. Exhale, inhale. Just observe your breath, be fully aware of the breath, conscious. You don't have to pay attention to anything else, just your breath. You don't have to do anything, you have nothing waiting for you. There's nothing to do other than just watch the breath and deep slowly and breathe slowly. In and out. In and out. Maybe breathe a little bit less deep now, a little bit slower. Relax your forehead, relax your eyebrows, relax your shoulders, your fingers, your feet. With every breath, relax a little bit more. Smile, remember the intention. Connect with the consciousness, your awareness, the real you with him. Breathe less deep now, even less deep. Slowly, gently. Enjoy the wonderful breathing in and out. Feel how wonderful it is to take every breath very, very slowly, gently. You can let go of the breath and just be, sit and be. Just be, there's nothing to do. Just be here. I'm sure you can relax a little bit more. Just a bit more, a bit more. Relax the forehead, the eyebrows, the mouth, mini smile, everything's great. Relax the shoulders. Keep your eyes closed friends. Put your hands in front of your chest, on your forehead. Think of what you're grateful for, think of what you're thankful for. Accept this moment of gratitude for what we have. Wrap your hands together. Place them in front of your eyes. Massage your face a little bit. Give yourself a nice hug. Give yourself a nice hug, rub your body. Wake up your senses, wiggle your toes, move your feet. We're sitting in one position for a while, so let things just settle and get back to normal. Give yourself a nice massage. I hope that you truly enjoyed the session. I encourage to do, to have a regular breath work, pranayama, meditation practice. It gives great results and brings many, many benefits. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Namaste.